Good evening. Tonight, we have a joint meeting with both the City Council and our Planning Commission. I always look forward to opportunities to meet together. And especially excited to talk about the Clock Tower Plaza. Let's start with a roll call, please.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Dennehy. Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Beesmith. Council Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Chairman Maloney. Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Ladue.
Here.
Commissioner Moss. Commissioner Suther.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Wonderful. Thank you for everyone that was able to make it tonight. We really appreciate it. We also have our consultants online as well as our city planner, Patrick Allredy, and our administrator, Ryan Stevens. Where do you want to get started on our presentation?
Well, let me give some introductory comments before I turn it over to the folks from Livable City Studios. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, members of Planning Commission. A little bit of the history of how we got to where we are this evening. So you all remember that in 2021, we adopted this comprehensive plan. And we are, in fact, not just letting it sit on a shelf and gather dust. Clock Tower Plaza was one of the specific projects called out and recommended as a way to not only make use of what is currently an overflow parking lot right now, but also to energize the westerly end of Main Street with a space that is, you know, open and accessible to the public and could be programmed for use to really energize this part of Main Street. So based upon that, and a budget allocation last year, which we then went out and found matching grants from the Department of Local Affairs for, we initiated an RFP in December of last year. And then began, from the firms that had made submissions on that RFP, we began an interview process. We have both Chairman Maloney from Planning Commission on the interview committee, as well as Councilmember Schmisher as part of that as well. Based upon that, we found that Livable City Studios truly understood what we were going after, truly understood what it was we were wanting to accomplish, best of the four firms. So we negotiated out an agreement and then brought that to council for a ratification of the agreement. And work officially commenced on this project in February with the formation of the survey that we were going to launch, as well as plans for our first step in our public outreach process. We actually initiated this on March 1st. We held our stakeholder meeting here at City Hall with property owners and business owners around Clock Tower Plaza, as well as other interested parties, people who are interested in historic preservation, people who are interested in, you know, growth downtown. So we had a lot of involvement. It was a very well-attended first stakeholder meeting. That same day, we launched the first survey that we would be able to access public input as to what they would really like to see happen with the Clock Tower Plaza space. In the 10 days that that survey was open, we garnered 1,195 responses, which by Canyon City terms is exceptional. I don't know of any survey that's ever gotten that kind of a result before. Based upon the feedback from both the stakeholder meeting and the survey, Livable City Studios went and created three concept alternatives for how to program that space. We refined that, worked with them a little bit more, and then brought those three design alternatives to a second stakeholder meeting that happened on April 27th, followed by a public open house that also happened April 22nd, and a second survey that went live that night. That was intended to get from the public what they liked about each of the three design concepts that we brought them, what they didn't like about them, you know, how the orientation of certain facets of the design. And the idea was to use the input that we got from the second stakeholder meeting, the public open house, and the second survey to refine this into one consolidated design. So that second survey actually got about 459 responses. Not as big as the first, but certainly not an insignificant number of people who participated in that second survey. So what you're going to hear this evening is the presentation of the consolidated alternatives that are based upon the feedback that was gleaned at the stakeholder meeting, the public open house, and the second survey. Livable City Studios will kind of walk you through those survey results and walk you through how those informed the consolidated design. What we're looking for this evening is a consensus from both Planning Commission and City Council on the consolidated design. Following this, if we get a thumbs up on this, we will be taking this to some final design documents, some construction plans at about a 50% completeness level, that can then be picked up when we are ready to make improvements to Third Street, hopefully sometime next year. And to achieve an economy of scale, hopefully both projects can be constructed concurrently with one another. So this will be a really big project with a lot of impact for the westerly end of Main Street and Main Street in general. So with that, I would like to introduce Melanie Carpenter and Will Vitannan, both from Livable City Studios, to kind of walk you through what we have heard from the public, what we've heard the public tell us about this, and how that's informed the overall design. So Melanie, over to you.
Thank you, Patrick, very much for that excellent introduction and recap of the process so far. And good evening to everybody at the meeting and watching live at home. Just to recap a little bit about, and mark some of those key events that have happened over the last several months that Patrick just described. This just graphically shows all the different touchpoints we've had with the community and all these opportunities to receive feedback and have the people of Canyon City influence the design progression as it has developed up to today. And so just as another kind of refresher, back at the end of April is when we came down to Canyon City and hosted a public open house, in which we presented these three very different And we heard a lot of feedback, which is absolutely fantastic. The survey that went live collected even more feedback. And we'd like to share with you all some of the key takeaways of how these three concepts we were able to identify through the help of the public, the most important features, and maybe some of the features that people didn't like. And so a little bit about what we heard through the public meeting and also online through the survey collectively. Some of the top likes from those three concepts were use of materials that were reflective of historic Canyon City or the local landscape. A large, open plaza space was preferred. String lighting, a top-like. Many people expressed a desire for the elevated deck with an open-sided shade structure. There's a lot of support for curved planters that would define the plaza from Main Street and Third Street. A lot of people also supported this idea of a cooling water feature and additional seating, as well as overwhelming support for a public restroom. And then some of the top dislikes, which were equally enlightening in our process to kind of find that preferred concept, were dislike of the irregular or contemporary organization and layout that was strongest in the third concept option. Not a lot of support for the use of synthetic turf, or even having a gathering lawn based on other open space within Canyon City. And then also a dislike of iconic light columns or colorful or animated lighting of the clock tower itself. And so all this really distilled down into a pretty wide favoring of a combination of city heritage, which was Concept 1, and community green as Concept 2. And most people were looking for a bit of a balance of these two in addition to a few select features from Canyon Square. And so what we have done over the last couple of months since receiving all that feedback is really be able to pull those elements forward, those top likes, make sure that those are incorporated, and really refine some of the things that people said that they didn't like from those initial concepts. And so here is our preferred site plan concept. Oops, sorry. And just a little breakdown of kind of the spaces that were included. Keeping that large, flexible plaza space, which was one of the top likes through the public outreach. We also were able to incorporate that elevated shaded terrace that can function as kind of a small, flexible stage space. And then also kind of pulling forward a strong corner and presence with that corner of Main Street and Third Street with a clock tower memorial area. And so having kind of a really strong presence at that street junction and really draw people into the plaza. All these yellow arrows that you're seeing are ways in which you would be able to kind of access the plaza from the street with additional service access coming off of the alleyway, which could help support any number of events or other maintenance of the plaza itself. And so to break down all the different elements that are included in the preferred concept, starting kind of at that entry point, is the clock tower, of course, anchoring the corner of the site and really offering that welcoming beacon. We're also proposing a small addition of an awning, just to give the clock tower a little bit more substance at its base and really kind of provide an opportunity to engage with the edge of the clock tower in a more meaningful way that could have a little bit of landscaping beneath it and some interpretation that might talk about the history of the clock tower and some of that great context. We also have kind of those defined planting areas that we heard were really widely liked, kind of this idea of a formal separation or definition from Main Street and Third Street. So these curved planters would be seat wall height, which means you can kind of stop and pause and be able to sit all along those planting areas at the edge of the plaza. We also considered supplemental shade. And so to keep that open plaza nice and flexible, we were using a solution of having shade sails to provide additional seasonal shade when it's most important in the hot summer months, but also be able to be taken down in the winter when you're really seeking that extra bit of sunlight. These would be integrated really nicely with the string lights, which the community told us was really, really important to them. And so you'll see that we have quite a few kind of string lights arranged throughout the core of the plaza. Moving kind of deeper into the plaza, we have two of the incubator kiosks sighted, and that is supported by a lot of kind of seating and gathering opportunities that are right around those areas. We also have the public restroom sighted down off of Third Street here, and also has kind of functional use and kind of access to the alley for maintenance of that facility. We also wanted to propose kind of a great idea about a kind of information board and really be able to encourage people to, particularly tourists coming up from the river, to understand what's in Canyon City and be able to have a directory of sorts that would be able to inform people about other opportunities to spend time in Canyon City and businesses that are along Main Street. And then moving towards the back, we have the kind of elevated shaded terrace, some really nice kind of steps and seating that can function on an everyday basis and give great views looking back towards the clock tower, but also informally be used as a small stage opportunity as needed. And that's completely accessible. And then the water feature we were proposing right in the center here, and the thought is that that splash feature is kind of a pop jet model so that when it's off, if there's a large event, the plaza remains super flexible. There's no hindrance of that water feature. It can be flipped on or off as needed. And so you always maintain kind of full utility of that central plaza space. And to support that, just a few kind of character images about what that kind of enhanced clock tower would start to look like, how the shade sails would be able to provide that balance of sun and shade, and kind of that nighttime activation with the string lighting. We wanted to also kind of propose some of the elements that may be a little bit less familiar of understanding, what do we mean when we say kind of an open-sided shade structure, as well as some character for what those incubator kiosks or the public restroom could start to look like. I think it's important to, thinking about the feedback we received, about how important it is to pull from historic Canyon City materials or local landscape materials. And so some of those planters may incorporate stone seating. And obviously, we'll look for opportunities in the structures, such as the public restroom or the kiosks, to also kind of reinforce and pull in some of those materials that you're also seeing in the ground plane with the different kind of pavement selections. And so just to kind of go a little bit deeper into the various kind of lenses that we've looked at this space, and what has really made this a powerful preferred concept is we've thought really intently about place and identity that came forward in the public outreach. So I had mentioned some of the things that we're talking about there is really kind of formalizing the clock tower as a public space and giving it a really strong presence and a really welcoming feel. And so a lot of these kind of design interventions right around the clock tower, the enhanced paving, some engraving in the pavement that added awning along the clock tower really helps to establish it and really become a kind of public space-oriented beacon at this end of Main Street. We also wanted to share just a example of what that interactive directory and bulletin board could look like and how that could still reinforce place and identity in the way that that comes together so that it feels very much part of the plaza and the materials all kind of feel in sync with each other. There's a lot of opportunities as well for added kind of interpretation through engraving or engraved bricks with community members' names, just to add to some of the kind of engraving that's already present on the clock tower itself. And then also just thinking a little bit about what it means to have those natural materials that connect to place in flagstone and other kind of stone, wood, and vegetation type materials, as well as kind of a nice opportunity to provide some of that kind of signage that we talked about right along the clock tower that really could tell the story of the clock tower in Canyon City. And then just to also kind of expand a little bit about materials and how specifically we are, this design kind of reinforces the idea that we should use materials that are present in historic Canyon City or the natural landscape. One of those materials that we have to think about is certainly planting and how the planting character can really offer a ton of amenity, but be very reflective of the native landscape. And so this is a great image of kind of that zeric, which would be kind of minimal water use, herbaceous planting. And then we also are kind of catering towards the historic Canyon City with the use of permeable pavers that have that kind of strong red kind of character to them. And then also referencing a lot of the more natural landscape through incorporation of sandstone in various forms. So that could be kind of large boulders that you are seating height, that could be kind of flagstone that is in the paving that's around the clock tower. It could even resemble the Skyline Drive kind of archway, which has some really kind of unique collage of local stone and how rich that texture can be and add a lot of relevance and locality to this plaza. And then when we're talking a little bit about kind of this elevated zone, that's what we're thinking, kind of these sandstone slab terraces that you'd be able to kind of step up mildly to get to that elevated area. And then also kind of in areas that are kind of going, that elevated terrace would likely be a elevated finish of some sort of concrete, just to provide a good hard stand for various furnishings and gathering opportunities, tables and chairs and things like that. And that the structure that goes above that terrace would likely be some sort of a faux wood or steel combination structure, just to kind of provide a very appropriate kind of historical feel that also has kind of, it's a good longevity to it as well. And so with all these improvements, we just wanted to take a moment to talk about parking. And what we're trying to show with this diagram is we recognize that the current clock tower site is, in fact, a kind of overflow parking lot. And even though it's not striped today, we estimate that if you were to kind of formalize that parking lot, there's about 24 stalls in that space as functional parking stalls. There's also six parallel parking street spots along Third Street and a few along Main as well. And so with these improvements, we would be losing those Third Street, street parking spots with the Third Street improvements, as well as the estimated 24 spots within the lot. But through all that work, we would actually be implementing about three or four additional spots along Main Street. So there'd be a little bit of a give back right in this kind of corner. And then we'd also like to really highlight the, these are two lots that are, one is online already, and that is the 316 Macon Avenue lot. There's about 20 stalls in there right now. It's not currently formalized and striped, but the city is planning to formalize it with a parking design layout. But that is an active and open lot right now. So there are kind of 20 plus four additional that are all kind of as this work is going on would be available, as well as the new method at Dry Cleaners site, which is expected to be demolished and turned into a parking lot very soon. And that would offer 24 additional stalls with a small loss on Main Street just for that curb cut there. So all in all, with the two additional lots, all within kind of 600 feet of our site, we're actually net gaining, there's a little bit of shuffling in terms of where those parking opportunities sit within this little four-block zone, but ultimately, no true loss of parking, just a bit of a reshuffling. And so this is just a follow-up, a little bit of what those two parking lots off of Macon and Main Street would start to look like. So that is the, the one off of Macon is currently kind of a compacted aggregate surface, and it is free and open to park in right now. But once it's striped, we'll have 20 formal spaces, and then the 24 that would come online a little bit later. And so to conclude, just wanted to, obviously, tonight, very excited is the joint planning and council concept submission. And so I appreciate you listening to that presentation. And then, as Patrick mentioned, our next step will be to produce 50% landscape plans for the city of Canyon City, which would help prime this project to be picked up for construction at a later date when the Third Street work moves forward. And so we would be happy to kind of answer any specific questions and provide answers as best we can. Like to kind of open it up to any questions that the council has or anybody else.
Go ahead and speak up if you have any questions or comments.
I have a couple that may be directed to staff, I'm not sure. I drove by, just real briefly, the lot that's on Macon. Is that, are there signs at all there saying it's a parking lot, or is that just yet to come? I'm not sure what the timing or plan is for that Macon lot.
Yeah, we're looking at having it as a formal lot when we pave everything and have everything striped. I'll be honest, I don't recall if we have any signs up within the lot itself that says parking. I'd have to go back and check with the street department.
When I drove by just before the meeting, there wasn't anybody in it, and it, because of, I mean, and it was, I didn't stop and look, but because of the growth of weeds in the area, I wouldn't have known it was a parking lot just by driving by and seeing this. So I just wasn't sure what the timing plan was on that. And then I had a question, could someone remind me a little bit more about what the ultimate plan is for Third Street?
So this is a question that Leo can probably answer with a fair degree more expertise than I can. But I think the concept is that Third Street is intended to be more of a complete street, which means multimodal transportation will be supported there, and that will include bumpouts that will occur at Third and Main. So I don't know what the details of exactly what that looks like, but again, the idea is bicycle lanes, you know, wider sidewalks, narrowed lanes for streets. There will still be on-street parking, I believe, on the east side of Third Street. But yeah, largely, the parking on the west side of the street will probably go away in favor of this new concept.
Okay, that helps, thanks.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan for Third Street called it out as a complete street, having the trail connection with the hogbacks down to the riverfront and the Riverwalk. You know, it's an important connection for the community. It's also an important connection for those who may be going to the train or, you know, visiting Centennial Park for an event and really connecting the know, visiting Centennial Park for an event and really connecting the city assets that we have south of Highway 50 to Main Street and what we have north of Highway 50.
And, and our future riverfront zoning.
Right. Okay, that, that helps, thanks.
Why did we have to get rid of the parking spots on the west side of Third Street?
I believe that's to make room for, for the bike lane, if, if we're going to have a bike lane there.
I had a few questions. If folks can hear me, okay. Awesome. Thank you so much for that presentation, Melanie. That was extremely helpful. I have a couple of questions for you and then I think one question for the city. My questions for you with regard to the perfect concept, I just wanted to better understand how the improvements to Clock Tower Plaza would interact with boudros. So I know that there are windows along boudros, kind of pretty close to Main Street, so I just wanted to make sure that the placement of the kiosk wouldn't be in front of those windows and that that had been taken into account.
Yes, so that we absolutely did kind of identify those windows on the side of boudros and those are accounted for. We would certainly love for that window to be activated in some way. I think there's a really strong opportunity there after this work kind of is completed and all that activation is in this space. But yes, we, we have definitely kind of been careful to make sure that those windows are unhindered in any way.
Great. And then my second question, also kind of with the relationship to boudros, I was wondering how elevated this is, just because there is that kind of wall into there, so I wanted to understand better how the interplay worked.
Yeah, that's another great question. So just with this area back here, right, is that what you were talking about? I think we're, we're thinking that it would be an absolute max of about a foot and a half. So we're not looking to create a really, really tall kind of moment because you're absolutely right. Anything that is raised in here has implications kind of on that alley side as well. And so we are looking to, this would require that there is some sort of a retaining wall along that edge to hold that terrace up, but we don't really want it to be substantially tall, nor do we feel like it needs to be. I think it's really just to provide a little bit of a more kind of interesting space and provide that formalization so that if there was ever a small performance up here, it gives you that kind of just slight differentiation. But yes, thinking it'd be pretty low in kind of general.
Wonderful. That's so great to hear because I'm assuming then that that means just, just above one, that that's actually an ADA accessible ramp so that that's basically.
Absolutely, yes. Yes, yep. So it is fully accessible and you're absolutely right, just above one, that is an indication of an ADA ramp.
Wonderful. One more question for you and then I think one question for the city if that's okay. Just on the public restrooms, I think in your image that you had for them, you were showing the brick ones, which I think was indicative of what you had displayed for one and two and could have not what was in the potential concept number three, which was more contemporary or modern. Is that the plan?
Yes, yes. So I think we're, we, obviously when we get to that next level of design, we can explore all sorts of options. But I think the thought is that the restrooms have a very kind of permanent feeling, something that is a really thoughtful structure and doesn't just feel like a elevated portaloo. And so what exactly that means or what that could look like, I think there's obviously tons of options. So I don't know for sure whether or not it will be fully brick clad like this, but I think definitely in terms of its character and kind of how it has that presence of intentionality, it will kind of share similarities.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And it's so great to hear about kind of the intentionality behind which we'll be selecting the materials to really match the local landscape and to really match kind of what the history and character of Canyon City is. My one question for the staff is I know one of the challenges that we currently have with Macon Plaza when we have our, when we have events there, it's just all of the jersey barriers that are needed in order to have liquor in Macon Plaza. Will the raised planters kind of minimize the number of jersey barriers or kind of those metal barricades that are needed or have you guys thought, had the opportunity to think through that at all?
Yeah, I, I think the, the planters would certainly help anywhere, there was a previous picture that had a bunch of arrows. So anywhere where there are arrows, anybody who's holding an event that has liquor, they're either going to have to monitor those exits or they're going to have to put some type of barrier there. So that, that would be a condition of their liquor license.
Okay, but that still looks like it would be considerably less than the, kind of the, the challenge that folks faced for Macon Plaza event stuff. Okay, thank you, that's really helpful.
I believe Kirk was next.
Just a couple of questions, it's probably for staff. As far as the planners and landscaping, do we have any idea who's going to be responsible for the maintenance of those in the long term? And secondly, in reference to that, will those individuals that are knowledgeable about that be involved with helping to determine what the plants are?
Yes, that would be the Parks Department and yes, they, they would be involved in that process. And we, we had them in some of the early stakeholder meetings as well.
And it, it's important to note that I believe our Parks Department is just, two of our, our Parks Department employees have just become certified arborists. So knowing how to care for zenic plants of a ze, you know, xeric nature will certainly be something they're familiar with.
They, they certainly appreciate more of the hardscape than having additional grass in, in the space. Planters are a whole lot easier to take care of, I believe, especially if they plant correctly.
Well, and I, and Rex has been wanting to put raised planter beds on Main Street anyways because the salt from the streets in the winter are killing the plants. And so now he's getting those raised beds. So might be a good footprint for what will happen for the rest of Main Street.
That's very important because they can look very nice, but at the same time, if they're not maintained, it can look very bad. Then just one other question, in reference to the incubators, it might be premature now, but do you have any types of businesses that you're targeting for these two areas? And then would those businesses be year-round or would they be seasonable?
Yeah, luckily we have our economic development manager in the audience.
Can I take a seat, please? Rick Harmon's in the house.
I had a hunch. We don't necessarily have any designated right now. The concept, and we talked about this a couple of years ago, there are a number of businesses in town that are small, like small-scale manufacturers and they're somewhat interested in getting into retail, but they can't afford to be downtown. So this was an idea that they could bring their wares, their products to market in these, in these kiosks. We also created recently or in the process of creating a downtown partnership because whatever we select to go in there will need to work pretty much cohesively with the business downtown. So it's very possible that when we create this program, the downtown partnership will be involved with selecting retail as well. We don't necessarily want to pick something that's going to compete with another retailer downtown. We just really want to try to incubate smaller, again, the concept was like those smaller scale manufacturers to, to get their products to market.
Diversify it a little bit.
Yeah, and, and we, we still need to create the programming for that, though.
Okay.
Wasn't part of that too, that they would get some, part of being able to have that space was also having business training as well? In the hopes that they would grow their business and then move to a brick and mortar store on Main Street?
Absolutely.
And then it'll make room for the next incubator.
Yep. So and as far as longevity, it's not, it's not pictured as anything that would be multi-year necessarily. The hope is that they would determine whether they can move on to a space downtown or not.
They just wouldn't be open during the summertime during the tourist season. It would be a full year round is what you're looking at with the incubators.
Yeah, we'll have to see how that plays out weather-wise and stuff, but yeah, that was the intent.
Okay, thanks.
And another option would there, would be potential for seasonal pop-up shops as well.
Right. It seems like you might almost want, at least at times, some kind of food and drink available, somebody's lemonade stand or something because otherwise there wouldn't be any real easy access there, I don't think, to anything to, you know, liquid beverages, whatever.
Well, except for boudros.
I'm sorry?
The restaurant, that's it.
Well, I, I know, I'm saying right there you might want beverages available for folks just.
Yeah, and other businesses to promote.
Something to think about. And on that, are we, I don't know if it's a good or bad idea, are we considering some kind of public water fountain in conjunction with the restrooms or?
We could certainly, I, I think we could probably do that in conjunction with the restroom, have a water fountain outside.
So there is one word of caution, though. And that is, I was able to attend both of the stakeholder meetings and I would say the topic that dominated tho, that more than anything else, where we could hardly even really dig deep into the planning, was is this going to become a magnet for homeless to come and hang out and just camp? And so we really asked to be really thoughtful, that we don't create features that would just bring the homeless in there. And so part of me thinks, okay, you got public restrooms, you got a drinking fountain, you got all these things, it could really create places to sit. We need to be really careful for that as to what we could create unintentionally.
And along those lines, the, I think the, you know, Rex will probably speak up at the appropriate time too, but those restrooms probably need to be lockable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that shows a kind of an open entry right now. And the.
So sorry, John, we actually had, Andrea Stein was next in the queue and then you're after her.
Yeah, I have just one comment about the public space thing. Yes, there's, that's always a possibility that it would attract homeless people, but what happens with public spaces is that people who normally have nowhere to go to be together, are citizens, if they're there and they're enjoying the evening, they're, they're enjoying a concert and they're, they're connecting with each other, I think that could outweigh the fear that it's going to be a dilapidated place where people go to camp. I think that, and you'll, and if you went to other cities that have similar spaces, you might see that. It's, it's kind of a neutral space for people to get together and sometimes that encourages the kind of community that discourages the vandalism, the, you know, negative things. I'm just saying, I'm not saying that that's what will happen, but it could. And I do have a question for Ryan. I think the, we do need a, definitely need a bike space if that's going to be the entryway to our, to our downtown area, the way that Leo is suggesting. But have you talked to the prison yet about the signage when you're trying to go up into the hogbacks?
Yeah, I, I think the, the signage should be, sorry, I'm trying to go back to work. So the questions about the, the signage at the hogbacks, there, there's prison property up there and there, there's signage asking people not to go onto the prison property and to stay towards the, the hogback signage, so, or to that, towards the hogbacks. You know, I've talked to the Parks Department, have not talked to the, the prison themselves.
Okay, so we can, we could perhaps come together with the prison officials to get some kind of signage that does warn people that, you know, this is a prison property. But right now it's like, danger, danger, don't go here. And when, when you're riding your bike, it just kind of stops you like, is it safe to go here or am I allowed here? Are they going to shoot me? You know, that, it's, I mean, seriously, it's, it's kind of questionable there. But it's, this is a great, a great idea, thank you.
Mayor Pertham Hemrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have a whole bunch of comments and stuff, so we, people may need to jump in as we go along, but the, there, there's kind of a chicken and the egg problem, I think, that we need to make sure that we're, that we're thinking head-on. And that's if we're going to have bump outs there around the clock tower, those need to be integrated into the design. So that we need to do, if we're going to have that, we need to have those, that designed first so that we make sure that we, that it's integrated with what we're doing here. The, my, I've got a question on the terrace. Will the south terrace wall be open to the alley or will, excuse me, will the south terrace be open to the alley or will the, will, will there be a wall there?
I think the intention is it will be open to the alley.
Yeah, and just to, as a safety component, we are proposing that there is some sort of a screen element to give you that sense of enclosure in that backdrop. So just, even though it's only a foot and a half and that's not necessarily from a code perspective required to have a fall barrier, we really want the orientation of plaza goers to kind of look backwards, back into the heart of Main Street and the clock tower. So introducing some sort of a nice screening element, simple construction, just kind of helps give you that backdrop in that space.
The, another question and this is, I think I have my tongue firmly in my cheek on this one, but is there any chance of getting territorial to open up their quarry again? We might use some really good rock from there.
I would have a story to tell.
And then on the, on the terrace, which I think is where the, where we're going to have the, the roof structure, is that correct? The, and, and it's a question, I'm, it, it would seem to me that it would be kind of nice to have it match style-wise with the, with the patio we have in Centennial Park, the Rotary Pavilion there, the pavilion. I don't, I don't know, that's, that's, that's a possibility. I mean, I'm good either way on it, we can have our own design there, but sometimes, you know, having matching architectural styles in different areas are kind of a.
Because even, even the rocks for sitting on, that's also a connection to what's at Centennial Park.
Exactly, and that's, that's the kind of thing I'm thinking about. And the, on the kiosks, do we, are we wedded to the commercial idea or is there some thought that we might do something with the Chamber of Commerce there as far as promoting our town or something like that? Just, that's just, that's just a thought, it doesn't really have anything to do with, with the designs that we're reviewing tonight.
Yeah, I, I think they're, you know, as far as the kiosks go, there, there's plenty of time to figure out the, the programming there. I, I think what your, the consulting team will tell you is there was a lot of feedback for the need for a directory and that, that was the, that was the, I think what originated the idea behind the kiosks for, for this design.
I have a quick comment to go with kiosks. I would like to see that that kiosk matched the downtown gateway signage so that that's also very consistent.
Absolutely. Mayor Smith, you may remember that in 2018 and 2019, we were working with a sign design company on that wayfinding sign program. And these, these interactive directories were one of the concepts that were included and they were ultimately dropped for cost. But yes, we, I mean, we could certainly revive that and this could, this directory could be consistent with the design of the wayfinding signs downtown.
What's next on your list?
That's it.
Oh, okay.
I actually, oh, good, sorry, Madam Mayor.
On the bricks that have community member engravings on them, I was wondering, what's the, like, what's the idea behind that? Like, who's going to sell them, what's, what are the funds going to go for? Was it just something that came out of the survey?
I think, I can at least take an initial stab at that one. So I don't know necessarily if we have, well, I know we have not yet established a formal process for which those bricks would be engraved or kind of the process behind what that funding would provide through selling those bricks. I think the thought there was just really be able to find a kind of collaborative way to incorporate the members of this community. to incorporate the members of this community, and be able to kind of imprint their name, or somebody significant to this community within the plaza itself, so just another tactic to make it feel, we always wanted this kind of plaza to feel like it's been in Canyon City for many, many years already, even when it's only a couple days old, and so, that's just a great way to have that level of integration with real community members, and just provide a little bit of that kind of identity component.
Mm-hmm.
There has not yet been a process flushed out of exactly how that would work.
Okay, and I do kind of like they did, because they do have engravings on the clock tower itself, and so, it kind of makes that very intentionally spread out, but I'd also encourage maybe looking into, there are old bricks that say Canyon City on them, and that would be cool to get our hands on some of those, and maybe if we needed to do replicas, if it's not in the plaza itself, but maybe that little space around the clock tower, that could be a cool part of that heritage piece, just a, just a thought.
Yeah, that's very cool.
Also, I had a comment on the restrooms as well, because on the picture that was in there, it showed that there was a men's side and a women's side, and I was wondering, is there an idea, is the size, like, are there going to be multiple stalls on each side, or?
I can speak to that a little bit as well. So, in contrast, I think this precedent image is definitely talking more, or we wanted to speak more to kind of aesthetic and materiality, more than the functionality of the exact architecture, I think somebody brought up a great point, you probably will have lockable doors, and so, certain parts of this image will not be completely realistic, I do think that there would likely be unisex stalls, and they would both be accessible, and so, there's a lot of really great models out there today that could still be customized to look very, very intentional and permanent, but they are individual door ADA stalls, they even have high-tech options, so much as like, a timer where it automatically unlocks after like, 15 minutes, so that you don't get any sort of security issues, you can even remotely lock them at a certain time of day using the same technology, so, shockingly, public restrooms are getting quite savvy, and so, there really are quite a few options to tackle some of those concerns that are very real in the community, so, concerns about whether or not they're unlocked all night, and things like that, a lot of the higher-tech new models have built-in programming to tackle majority of those concerns.
That's really good to know, and since you are still in the design phase, I liked the, that you mentioned that they would be unisex, just with today's climate, it doesn't, you know, that it will be important to create a space that no matter where you are in the spectrum, on how or who should be using a public restroom, that anybody and everybody would have a place that they would feel comfortable using that public restroom, for 15 minutes or less.
For 15 minutes or less, exactly.
Are there any other comments? Kathy Worthington.
I was just going to say, I really like the idea of the directory, and of course, that was something you got feedback on quite a bit, but I was also going to say, that's also an opportunity for sponsorship, in the sense of having signage of, you know, there are probably a lot of realtors out there who might be willing to spend a dollar or two per month, or something, to have that, and then have the money go back for maintenance or things that way, so, if you hadn't thought of that, that was just a suggestion.
I had one additional question, apologies, I don't, I can't raise my hand, or you can't see it this evening, so just jumping in, but don't want to cut the line.
Oh, go ahead, Amy, it'll be you, and then back to Mayor Portem Hammersick.
Oh, perfect, I just wanted to go back to one point that Councilwoman Stein had raised, are there any plans for bike racks, or more permanent intentional bike racks? I'm thinking about, if we're making Third Street a complete street, and if we're really trying to be intentional about connecting Main Street to the river, what are we, including thinking about with regards to how people would, would safely leave their bikes there? Thanks.
Absolutely, Amy, and I do believe, from this scale graphic, we are not graphically showing bike racks on the plan as of yet, however, we are definitely, our minds are there, we're thinking about those features, with all public spaces, there'll be a certain level of kind of amenities, like, offering bike racks, we agree, the, both the complete street, and just the fact that this is such a natural place for people to want to bike to, the importance of offering a place for them to secure their bicycle, there's a lot of really great options for where those can occur, but I think we could easily cite probably a handful in a few different locations, just to offer that amenity, as well as another common thing that people tend to worry about, is like, where are the trashcans? Promise there'll be trashcans, or at least one offered somewhere in the space, we just not, haven't cited those exactly yet.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
John?
Thank you, the, on, on the figure that we're looking at, we're seeing some circles, a circle surrounded by four small circles, those are intended to represent light poles, is that correct?
No, I believe those are intended to represent seating areas.
Seating areas.
Tables and chairs.
That's right.
And the lighting would only be provided by the string lighting, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
The, the...
There, there would likely be integrated lighting, in terms of independent lighting, we're thinking that just the string lights would provide that level of lighting, but more than likely, the shade structure will have integrated architectural lighting to provide lighting there, as well as the public restroom to provide adequate lighting for that space as well, so, I think there'll likely be lighting kind of integrated into any of the structures, but in terms of just kind of plaza, plaza lighting, string lights.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question, alleviated my concern about lighting in the terrace area especially.
I would like to speak to Councilmember Stein's comment about having to really activate this space, so that the community's really using it, and that is, by creating that activation, it becomes a deterrent for homeless behavior, and that was a really important conversation with our stakeholders, because there was a point where they're like, exit, we don't want anything here whatsoever, we are being so tormented and aggravated by aggressive behavior of homelessness, that we can't deal with anything more, to where we were having some additional meetings. So, we talked a lot about, we really need to activate this space, a lot, and one of those would be, I'm really glad to see that there's a water structure there, because if it will be anywhere as busy as the splash pad in Centennial Park, that means from May through September, it's going to be crazy busy, and that's going to really, besides, you know, deterring unwanted lurkers, but it's going to really bring a lot of people downtown as well, and just really want to say that, I would love to see, not only a grand opening celebration with live music and food trucks and all these other things, but a year-round calendar, hopefully, of, of that use, of that space. And then I also wanted to really say thank you for providing the parking numbers and the maps, because that also was a dominant conversation with the stakeholders, but also is very dominant in the online surveys as well, in the comments, saying, do nothing, we need parking, we need parking, we have to have parking. It doesn't, it looks like we might, if we implemented everything, we'll come out with just 11 extra parking spots, which isn't a whole lot, but at least we're not down into the negatives, but this is really helpful to have this mapped out. You had mentioned that we were going to put this on a shelf until we were ready to implement, but if we had that 50% design, and we're hoping to blend it together with the Main Street project, can we use that 50% design to seek grant funding to help pay for this? Have we thought about how we're going to pay for this?
Yeah, we will, yeah, we, we're always looking for grants, so, we will, you know, continue to do that, especially with, with this site, you know, looking for the economies of scale to partner this with another project like Third Street, you know, the Third Street project, we're, you know, we're looking at that probably fall of '24, so, as, as we start putting together the budget for, for next year, those are all considerations we'll be working through here in the next month or so.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be wonderful if, if it fits in our cycle to at least be pursuing that, because, because we have the design, and we're already doing the Third Street, it feels like that should be a really good candidate for a grant.
It, it very well could be, and, you know, a lot of our Third Street and Main Street improvements, those are all grant-funded as well, so, we are leveraging as many dollars as we can to get these projects done.
All right, anyone else have some comments? Yeah, Brian?
Yeah, I guess I would just recommend some consideration as to how food trucks might interact with the site, I think, you know, Main Street, those parking spots, that's sort of the obvious, but perhaps the alley, the service access and the gate, you could potentially serve through that. If the terrace is only a foot and a half above existing grade, perhaps you could actually sell, you know, order from the terrace, kind of things. Usually when I'm at a food truck, it's, it's higher than I am, so that, that might actually work really well.
With, with the gate there, there's also a possibility, depending upon the programming of the space, but you could actually drive into the open plaza and set food trucks up there as well.
And I think their, their ability to access electricity is also, you know, so that they're not using generators.
I have a question, please, Ms. Mayor.
Please, yeah, go ahead.
Brian touched on this real quickly, the electricity, do we have outlets that are going to be established there for the various lighting, various possible encampment venues and possible food trucks, but will there be cameras there, as far as security? I know we have cameras in the various parks, bridges, and things like that, are we going to allow for camera access and monitoring?
That's a really good idea.
I think it's an excellent idea, thank you. It's my only little input, but yeah, I would like to see those, because I know if we're considering the possibility of any kind of disruption with any kind of unsavory characters, I think cameras might help us a little bit on that, as far as a deterrent.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, we're always looking, very much like what we did with Centennial Park, we, you know, wanted to accommodate the food trucks there in Centennial Park, and live performances, you know, we'd like to see the same thing here in the plaza as well, and cameras as well.
What, Ryan and Patrick, what are your reactions, and Rick, your, what are your reactions to the plan and its potential?
My, my opinion is that we had three very different designs, there was a lot of feedback from the community, and I'm very happy with what Livable Cities has put together, taking the best of each of those plans that the community really liked, and melding that into one design.
Patrick?
My thought, in addition to echoing what Ryan just said, this kind of a project is what in planning circles is called comprehensive, or long-term planning, I'm very excited by this, I see this as an investment in Canyon City's future. Last year, Canyon City celebrated its 150th birthday, we're all excited about the sesquicentennial. I see this as, as a space that has the potential to be here, you know, another 149 years from now, when Canyon City is celebrating its tricentennial, and I sincerely hope that the people who are there celebrating that 300th birthday for Canyon City appreciate the fact that we did this, that, that we made this space, and that this space is an, an active component to those tricentennial celebrations in another 149 years.
I like it. Rick?
Echoing that, but I won't be here another 150 years. Maybe you will. I, I love it, I actually, you know, when we started talking about this, like, this concept with the incubators, it was a pretty plain Jane kind of a concept, you know, but taking the, taking the three different designs that they initially created, we noticed in our last public meeting that there were maybe eight people that, that joined the meeting, which pretty much told me that there were zero concerns really about this project. It, it struck me as being one of the least commented Facebook posts that I think I've seen from the city in quite a while. The other thing I like about it is that I really want to see that complete street, and hopefully some more wayfinding between US 50 and Main Street, because this is going to be an amazing addition to draw people from the river to Main Street. I think it's beautiful, you know, it's a space right now that's difficult, there's going to be, there's still going to be some challenges with it, but that's, it's a beautiful design, I love it, I really do, and it really brings a lot of, a lot more activity to this side of Main Street, that I believe is needed, so. The timing is great as well, with the 300 block and the Third Street renovation.
Quick comment on that, that we might want to think as we proceed with this, and with the Third Street improvements, trying to, and maybe you're already working on this, but really having some kind of visual connection from the highway, when you're driving by on the highway, you might not even know that's there, even once it's complete, but maybe there'd be a way to, and I don't mean a big sign or a billboard, but some kind of thematic something that would pull people visually.
That reminds me, we do have a sign that needs to go up across Highway 50, are we going to be putting that up? We actually have one.
We have it, it's, it's very long, it's, haven't unrolled it yet.
Rick and Christie are working on that with the streets department.
I know, it's arrived, so it needs to get, it's the busy season, we need to get it up, so there we have it. It's a banner.
And it says?
It's historic downtown with an arrow, yeah, we'll go across Highway 50, Christie designed it, yeah.
I have another quick comment about the safety aspect, for, oh geez, about four or five years, I lived in midtown Atlanta, and, you know, when you think of that, that's, it's pretty unsafe spots there, but they have a Centennial Park, and they have a whole, like, a pathway of the water feature that you're talking about, and what would happen, and it's in this big area, they have lots of events, they have musical events, huge, where they bring in lots of bands, and, but the, because I lived there, we would walk down there, because it really gets hot in Atlanta, and so, in the evenings, there was affordable housing around the park, families would be there with their children, using that water feature, and when you've got a bunch of families having picnics, having little kids running around, you're not going to have people lurking around, getting up to no good, it's just, that kind of, it kind of mellows that out, it's amazing, because when I tell people, like, we'd walk to the park in downtown Atlanta, they'd be like, really? But no, it does, it's amazing how it mellows the atmosphere.
DeeDee, we haven't heard from you yet, did you have any comments or reactions?
I, I think, I love the design, I think, as everyone has said, they've taken the best, and they've put it together into one, I, I love the fact that, I have some concerns, you know, as we've been talking about with homelessness, and I know that individuals on Main Street, the, the business owners have had a lot of problems with a small percentage of people who are homeless, but I would agree with what you had said, is that when you create an environment that's safe, and, and people are doing healthy activities, people who want to be, I just refer to them as knuckleheads, who want to behave badly, they'll, they'll go somewhere else to do that, so, yeah, I, I, I'm excited about this, and so, I don't necessarily have anything else to add than what, or any additional questions that haven't already been answered, so, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure, yeah, and when we had those conversations with the stakeholders, and it was getting kind of tense, I was like, you know, like you said, it's a handful of knuckleheads, and, and our police department is, I think it's literally 12 to 13, we know them all by name, they're meeting together with the homeless coalition to see additional plans that, ways that we can deal with it, because they just know exactly how close they can get to breaking the law, and not quite do it, and they look it right at our business owners in the eye, and say, you can't do anything about it, ha, 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 and they know it. But we appreciate that, there's that collaboration, but at the same time, like, are we really going to let just 12 knuckleheads stop something that can be a legacy project that really takes... that can be a legacy project that really takes Canyon City and does something extraordinarily special for our downtown and our community? And we're not going to give the power to those 12 individuals to stop us from moving forward. And we are moving forward, and we are taking care of those bad characters as best that we can, and we're still working on multiple ways that we can take care of that. So I'm excited to see this. I, when I saw the drawing of what it would look like visually, just the little black and white sketch, I was like, I was just like, yeah, like, I can see Canyon City embracing this. Like, I could tell that you really did listen to what our residents wanted and requested, and I really feel like it's going to fit and really be a really, really remarkable and special place to spend time together as a community downtown.
And just to add on to that, you know, the, looking at this, it, it looks like someplace I'd like to go hang out, you know?
Totally. Absolutely.
Oh, wow.
We're all knuckleheads of our own, so, but how many of us are in there? Yeah, we could do it.
So this may be redundant at this point, but we are looking for a thumbs up or a thumbs down on, on this, and some, some consensus for, for us.
Yeah, thumbs up, and hopefully you took a lot of notes too, as you're developing that 50% drawing, so that some of those little tweaks or things that can be added to keep in mind will be included.
Absolutely. I have a follow-up meeting tomorrow with both Melanie and Will to go over some of these conversations.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Planning Commission, thank you, City Council members, staff, thank you to our consultants, you really, really did an excellent job, and really appreciate the above and beyond effort to really engage the public in be, being decision-makers on this project. So I can't wait to see it happen. Really excited about it. If there's any other final comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.